Thank you. We'll start off tonight, Paul, 2:38, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our most recent town meeting in September, the body passed a zoning change to allow for additional housing units at Northwest Park. There's a desire to create an affordable housing component that focuses on the elderly within our community. There was a resolution at the close of town meeting to create a committee for this purpose. Suggested membership was someone from Council on Aging, someone from Veterans, someone from Disability, someone from the Housing Partnership, Planning Board, Zoning by Law Review Committee, Town Meeting, and of course, Selectmen. So, this committee would be put together to try to work out the details of a plan, to present to the Selectmen in the hopes of coming to a successful affordable housing agreement, so.
All right, thank you, Michael. Gentlemen, you want to start?
No.
Jimmy?
I'm good, I'll sit for now.
Michael?
Um, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a pretty good, well-rounded group. One member from each, each of those groups that you referenced, I think is, is a good number. Anything more than that, you can, you can kind of get barked down on, on issues. So, it's about three, is it, is it six? Six or seven? And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any more than that. My only recommendation is that I would suggest that the Chairman appoint Jim Doherty, perhaps, to, as liaison, a consultant to that group, helping that group. He's done some terrific work in the past in the area of housing.
Okay, great. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is, this is a good makeup. I agree with something running in that having Mr. Doherty on board as a liaison or consultant would be beneficial. And I know for the sake of not expanding this, this to a large number, I'll just say that I, I'll say publicly that I hope that Marge McDonald from the COA can work closely with Christine Schuhian of Youth and Family Services, considering the overlap in different populations during this process. But otherwise, I think this is, this is a good list to move forward with.
Right. Okay, so on that note between the two of his, I totally agree with you, Michael. I think Mr. Doherty would be a great asset to this committee. And I believe if we put him as like the liaison, I know there's a Selectman that would like to get on that committee, and I know some other people that would like to get on that committee also. So, why don't we do that? Do we need approval for this? Or what do you, how do we go about this? So, do, do I just get in touch with Jimmy and say, this is what we're looking to do?
What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is we can appoint the staff members to the committee this evening, and then what I could do is reach out to the Chair of Planning, Chair of EVRC, and the moderator, to ask them to provide us with, with one of their members to be on the committee.
And we can make it-
And then we can, we can appoint them at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, we can make it no, no more than one member from each board. That way there doesn't get confusing with, you know, thirty-two members on a board, and, you know, too many chiefs, not enough Indians. Did you get that, Bob? Chiefs? You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So, do I need a motion on that? So, move.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Five zero zero, Betty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 2:39.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have Lions Club with a permit request for the sale of Christmas trees from Shaw's parking lot.
Thank you. Is anybody here from the Lions Club? They usually, one guy usually comes, but he's not here tonight. This is something that they do every year.
Every year.
You all know about this, right?
Yeah.
So, it's not, it's not any rocket science or something, this one here?
Just to make an announcement on the, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, at this point, would-
I'll make a motion that we approve the sale of the Christmas trees on the Shaw's parking lot. And we've already seen the letter from Shaw's and everything, so that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay? So, five zero zero. What I'd like to do real quick is Shaw's parking lot, November twenty-third through December twenty-fourth, five to eight P.M., weekdays, and nine A.M. to eight P.M. on weekends, just, just for the general public. So, we all know they're going to be down there, so please, please help out the town and go buy a Christmas tree. All right? It's all set, Betty? Okay, thank you. 2:40.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have a presentation from the Town Sculpture Park Committee.
Hi, John Sax, Sculpture Park Committee. We've got two other members here tonight, sitting in the back. We met in front of the Selectmen about two years ago and just discussed this, and you folks at that time, four out of five of you, I think were the same folks, basically said, "Good idea, go ahead." And it's taken us a couple of years of trying to figure out how to actually make it happen. At this point, the Sculpture Park Committee is an official subcommittee of the Planning Board. And, and we have members from Selectmen, Planning, Library, Bob from the Business Community, and the high school, and maybe one other I remember.
Recreation.
Was that?
Recreation.
Recreation. Who's here? We, the basic idea, I think you've all got copies of this, of this little proposal we put out. In Master Plan Steering Committee, the concept came up that the center of town is not as memorable as some towns around that have those nice eighteen-nineties downtown buildings. It's pleasant, but a lot of time, you know, in the winter, when the grass is dead, there's not much going on there. And the idea came up in Master Plan Steering Committee, what if there was a sculpture park somewhere in the center of town? So, that's the idea we've been working on. It would help to activate the center, town center, bring people in, give you a reason to go there, and also maybe change the town's reputation. When you say Burlington, most people just say the mall. I mean, I've experienced that over and over. I'm sure all of you guys have as well. And that if we could change the image a little bit to, oh, that's the cool town that has the sculpture, that would probably be a plus. The other thing is, other than the community theater, the arts don't have a very strong presence in this town. Outside of the high school, there's not, there's not even an art association in Burlington, which is unusual. So, we thought this would be one way of upping the profile of arts in the community. So, there were a bunch of different ideas that came up. One was that as people, if we could put it along 3A, as the large number of commuters and drivers come down 3A, could see some big sculptures, that would really announce a change. But there's a lot of issues there. I mean, for one thing, we don't want to distract drivers, and 3A is a very busy road, so putting something that would attract kids on, along 3A, we thought, something we have to think carefully about. We, the committee took some walks. We walked over to that little, we walked all around the area, and we found that little field between the police station and the Grandview Tavern. And everybody said that this would be a great place for a little sculpture park. We haven't formalized it, but we have discussed the possibility of getting the garden club involved to make it, the whole thing, a little bit more of a happening. But for now, that was our primary focus. We also looked at the corners of the common to put something a little larger, so that when you drove by, you'd say, "Wow, look at that." We looked at the corner across from the gas station, and the corner when you come up Center Street, as being corners that are not accessible by truck or anything, so we wouldn't be blocking the use of the common for any other purpose if we use those corners. We've had a bunch of meetings. We put down some, we put together a timeline. We'd like to see an opening in June 2020. We have partnered with the New England Sculpture Association, and a representative from their group has been to most every meeting. What we plan to do is partner with them to put out a call to sculptors sometime in mid-November. Try to get a selection in January, giving the people about six months to get the work done. Now, we don't, we know that the sculptures could be something that they already have done, or they could make it on spec. Sort of doesn't matter. We give them six months from January to June to actually bring the work to us. They would be responsible for bringing it right to Burlington on a date that we would work out. Then we put together these guidelines. We said we didn't want a specific theme, because we didn't want to limit what could be asked for, that we wanted colorful work. We want to let them know that in most cases, the sculptures would not be illuminated at night, nothing political, work that delights all ages, and all of these other points that, that we have listed. And we've talked about the fact that it has to, the work has to stand up to weather, and you should not be able to walk up and break any of these works, or get hurt by any of these works. You can't have any sharp edges, anything like that. The next page, we talked about these three locations that I've mentioned before. We also had another time, it's not in this proposal, but we had talked about potentially works along in front of the town buildings. This town, this building, the annex, back in front of police. And at one point, one, our board member, Mr. Wick from the library, we had thought about putting a work down the street to bring people's attention to the library, because the library's a little bit off the main street. We didn't include that in this, because it just seemed like it was getting a little too complicated. So, we limited this to two larger pieces on the corners, tips of the common, and then a nice little group of works in that field. Having said that, so what we're really asking is permission from this board to go ahead and assume that we can put works in those three locations, or some combination thereof. If we ever in the future wanted to expand it further, we would come back to you and say, "Okay, this is what we've seen in terms of town response. People seem to like it. We'd like to make it grow." But we would come back to you guys for any further expansion. We have approximately $10,000 from Norblum Associates, Norblum, to fund the first set of works, and we may have some other monies from another developer. So, this isn't going to cost the town anything. The town, through the DPW, would be responsible to help in placing the works on the ground. It isn't even clear if a concrete pad needs to be poured. Some of these works, you can just sit them on the ground, you're done. But if there was a concrete pad, I believe, Selectmen, did, Nick, did you talk to, some, one of our members spoke to the DPW, and they said they would cooperate with us to the extent that installation was needed. But again, there's no electricity involved here. It's just putting these things in the ground in a safe way, or on the ground. In our understanding, having checked, one of our members checked with the town attorney and said that the town existing insurance would cover any damage to these works, which is important, because NESA doesn't, the New England Sculpture Association felt that insurance was important. Now, one other point is, we felt that the town, that these are basically, we're looking for pieces for two years, okay? We're going to give somebody a stipend of anywhere from $1,500 to $2,500 to use their work for two years. By making it two years, the amount of money required is less, and also, if over time people don't like it, we just return it at the end of two years. If people really like it, then we can negotiate with the sculptor and go fundraise to say, "Okay, people really love that one. Let's make that one permanent." So, it's kind of a test situation. So, if, we're pretty confident that we'll get works people like, but if they don't, they just leave town, so.
Okay.
Can I answer any questions?
Well, thank you. Gentlemen, where we start? Nick, why don't you start with this, because you're on that subcommittee for this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm right in. Yeah, so having had the opportunity to sit on this subcommittee, I will say that a lot of work and a lot of hours went into, very many discussion around the logistics of how something like this might even come to fruition. I want to pull back for a moment and just talk about two quick things. One is, I know that we, that this is called a Sculpture Park Committee, and it's hard, it was hard for the committee, too, at first, to understand what the definition of a sculpture was. And the representative from, John, what's the acronym again?
NESA, New England Sculpture Association.
The, the person we had working with us, you know, tried to frame it and say, "Don't think of this like, you know, the Statue of David," or "Don't think of this like, you know," or even in more abstract art, right? This could just be outdoor art. There are very many avenues to approach it from, plenty of which are safe and non-distracting, which we've all felt very comfortable with. So, just as we, as we had this conversation, I just want to frame that and say, from a big picture, when we say sculpture, we don't necessarily mean like a monolith of a thing. And the other thing I'll say, too, is, you know, to one of John's first points, is I think one of the biggest goals of this, this subcommittee is to try and bring a level of vibrancy to the town common area, that, that, you know, beginning of the 3A corridor as you enter into the downtown area of Burlington, that will appease everybody, right? That'll, that'll be a little marker, you know, for businesses as they come in from a cultural perspective, that people from Burlington can appreciate, as well as being residents and taxpayers here. And one thing we've tried to be very cognizant of is the type of, of art and how we craft that, that call, to be very, very careful and specific that we don't cross any lines or open ourselves up to any, any poor situations. So, yeah, so, I mean, you know, John covered a lot of the, the practicality of it, and, you know, I'm, I'm in support of, of something. I don't know, you know, exactly what we'll discuss, but, you know, I think it's a great idea, and I, I support it.
Great. We'll just go right ahead. Michael?
Excuse me, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I know you, I know how passionate you are about this, and, and I, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea to add some, some art to our community. I, I guess what we're, we're sort of asking us tonight to, to approve something that is sight unseen. We haven't seen any examples of what, what might be placed out there. I, I can tell you that if you look out Paul's window today, and for the past three years or so, there are a couple of pieces of rusty, twisted metal out there. And people often ask me, "What the heck is that?" I think you are aware, it's, it happens to be some steel from, from the World Trade Center or something. It does have some significance, but it's, a lot of people don't, don't know what exactly that is out there. We, Joe and I and Bob and we've, we've been talking about doing something at that particular site for, for close to two years now, and we've really not gotten any traction as to, you know, what the heck we're going to do with it, do with it out there. You know, people comment about this town common to me constantly. I think people from, not only from Burlington, but surrounding towns reference Burlington Town Common, and what a, what a jewel that is in this area. In fact, it's even referenced in a book called Massachusetts Town Greens by Mr. Eric Hurwitz. It's, he, he pointed out the, the unique town common that we have here in Burlington. So, so we're kind of protective of our, of that asset that we have out there, and I'm somewhat reluctant to, again, sight unseen, approving something that's going to be there for a period of two years. You know, I was just down in Florida recently, and in Orlando, they had a three-day event down there. They blocked off about five city blocks for art, different types of art, performing arts, sculptures, dance, and just an incredible success. They've been doing it for years. I was kind of talking with Nick about this a couple times, and thought that, you know, had, had you given any consideration to perhaps a three-day weekend event out there, just to sort of gauge the reaction from, from the community? Because I can tell you, you know, if we pull a shrub from that town common, people notice, and they will, they will ask questions. Anytime we put something new out there, people are going to ask questions. I, I guess you're kind of likening it to, you know, signs around town. You know, there is certain height requirements, or a certain other requirement, and then, and then, you know, beauties in the eye of the beholder. There's folks who, you know, we work very hard to get a signed by law or something we think is good. You, you put it up, and then you, all you hear is, be careful. Derogatory, I know, I know. I'm trying to choose my words carefully. Derogatory common. I, I like the concept, I guess is what I'm saying, John, but I, I'm reluctant to tonight say, yes, you have my blessing to use all of these locations. I kind of like the location between the police station and Grandview, perhaps maybe as a, a test site before we actually move on to the common. Those are just a couple of, of my observations.
All right, thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I concur that I think the area between Grandview and Police Station is the preferred location. I'd still, a couple of, one quick question, one concern. If for some reason there was a storm and a piece got damaged and became a safety issue, who would address that? Because that would be, needed to be addressed, you know, sooner than later, if it was a safety issue. Like if a piece of metal became sharp or whatever it may be?
Good question. I, I, my first thought is DPW to, to deal with it in some safety-oriented way, because they have the machinery and the manpower to, if need be, cover it with a tarp. I mean, the committee would take responsibility, but we don't have equipment. You know, I mean, obviously, I would say, sure, I would run out there with a tarp and cover it, but it might require something a little bit beyond that.
Yeah, because the top just covers it.
Right.
But if it's a safety issue, the tarp covering it doesn't make the safety issue go away. I'm just concerned about someone cutting themselves on a piece of shop metal, glass, plastic, whatever it may be.
Right. Well, I guess I would say that our hope would be that we would not bring in or install any piece that had that kind of potential to be dangerous if it was damaged.
And the other, one concern I have is on location number two. The, the drawings, or I should say, the photographs show location number two lining up with the stop line on Center Street, and that has a potential to be a view obstruction-
Right.
-for people at the stop line. So, I'm a little, little concerned about that specific location. Like I said, like Mike said, I think that area between Grandview and Police Station is, is perfect for this.
Right.
Just a little concern about the two, the safety aspects of the pieces overall, and the safety aspect of where that one's located.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll say.
What?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, you alluded to the insurance and some comments by Town Council about protecting individuals who get hurt. No, the, the property itself gets damaged. They have, there's insurance for it, is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding is that the existing town insurance would both cover a person who managed to get hurt, and it would cover the sculpture if somebody damaged the sculpture, both liability in both directions. That's my understanding. We, obviously, we can, we can get that right.
I, I would, I would appreciate that, just for confirmation. Also, the guidelines for the artists, it doesn't specifically say anything about good taste and family-friendly or anything like that, and I-
Well, works that delight all ages would be welcome. I think that's as close as we came to family-friendly. I think the committee would, is extremely concerned that the first appearance of sculpture in town be as popular as possible, that we're thinking about colorful sculptures, for example, of animals tend to be extremely popular. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to say it should be large, fun animals, because supposing somebody is a, has a wonderful thing to offer, but he just doesn't do animals. That's why we didn't want to put a theme or any, many specifics as possible. But it was really clear to us that if we put stuff out there, especially the first time, that is, well, none of it would be in bad taste. There's not going to be news, there's not going to be political, that kind of thing. But if, if something is just so obscure that people just don't see, like, what's that doing there? We would really not want to do that, because especially the first time out, it's really important that we get a positive response.
And, and who's the purveyor of the final word?
Well, I think we were assuming that the Sculpture Committee, as it's currently constituted, would look at all of this, the works that came in, get some input from our member, our advisor at, from NESA, the New England Sculpture Association. But it, I don't see why we can't bring final choices either to townspeople through some mechanism, or right back to you guys, so that, you know, you, you wouldn't be blind. You would say, we could come back and say, "These are the ones we got. This is what we're looking for."
Okay. I, I don't have a rock-solid objection, but this, tonight's the first time I've heard about the concrete slab, and I need to think about that, putting a concrete slab in several places around the common. I, I don't know that that's going to be very popular.
I am all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Buckley has his hand up. Before I get into anything, Bob, come on down, and I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Maybe you can, I just said that you can answer them all, so. So, I am definitely not against this idea at all. I think it's a great idea for the town. I think I definitely like a lot of different aspects that came up tonight, as far as, I like Mike's idea of that one spot over between the Police Station and Grandview Farm. I think that's a great place to start. I totally agree with the fact that I don't want to approve anything where I don't know what it is. So, that's, that's a big factor, because when it does come back, we get it. We're going to get, like, what did you guys put on that common? And, you know, and that's not something I really want to deal with, with everything else that has to go on in town. So, a couple of the things I have, as far as illumination goes, that's another whole story, because you, if it's going over here, next to the farm, there's, there's nothing there to illuminate it with, and that means we got to drag a trench and put electricity in and all that kind of stuff for it. So, that's probably going to be a-
No, it's not going to be illuminated.
Well, it didn't, he didn't, it's not what he said. He says it on here, but he didn't say that. He said, "There's possibility that it could be illuminated later on." So, that's what I'm going with on that. The other question I had was, you answered one with how long, two years each. The second, fourth, fifth thing I'm saying is, the sculptor that does this work, is he going to want a sign in front of the sign that says, "Sculptured by Bob Buckley"? Just in case, just in case, just in case it was you. I'm just saying.
I'd have a stick figure.
Yeah, I can't even draw that, Bob, so. But I mean, is there, is there going to be some type of a notice on, "Who did this? Who, who, who made this beautiful piece of artwork?"
Generally, let me-
So, those are the few questions I have, and there's a couple other ones, so answer those, and then we'll get back to it.
I'm the representative of the business community on the Sculpture Committee.
Yep.
A couple of things. I think that, just going to come as a surprise, but I would say most of my practice is outside of Burlington, but in a lot of the municipalities that I'm in right now, be they small cities or even towns, there's a, there's a move afoot to try to create some- or even towns, there's a move afoot to try to create some type of artistic or cultural presence. Your questions are all right on the money. I think that, at best, that you could be asking for this evening from the committee would be a receptivity to a location, because any specific piece of work would have to be subject to coming back here to have it approved under a license agreement to put it there. That license agreement would cover the things such as insurance. That's your opportunity to deny the license, because if it's offensive, that would be your opportunity to do that. But also illumination, if that were desired or anything of that nature. So you'd look at all those issues and deciding whether or not to grant the license to put it on municipal property. So it's not as if you're approving that you could put a pad on the, on the common. I'm not so sure I would actually advise a pad on a common, because a lot of these sculptures don't require that, and you'd hate to put one in only to take it out once that two-year period goes by. So those are the types of issues that, when you had a specific piece, which is location-specific, that they'd come before the board and say, this is what is, the committee has decided, or whatever the public process is, and you'd request a license agreement that would be reviewed by council. That would include insurance and all those other issues. The question about removal, that would certainly be in there if there was a damage and you had to have immediate removal. You'd want the artist to acknowledge if there's a dangerous situation, that the town and/or the committee has a right to go in there and remove it from a safety standpoint without liability, those types of issues. So you're all right on with your questions. But I will say this, from the business community side, and this really isn't, doesn't necessarily go to municipal property, but there is, there is a sense of place that you're trying to create in a lot of these communities. You do have a very nice common out here. I do think it's rather large at times, but, and you have a lot of activities on it. But in the future, that's your call, whether you want to do something there. For instance, I've known what those pieces of steel are, and you also have the Olympic rings over there, and you also have the veterans memorial there. You have a lot of interesting things going on that maybe a lot of people don't even know are there, and it might be, you know, a way, if you did something between the buildings, you get people to activate this area. You have a, I'm going to orient myself now, you have a retail establishment going over here. Maybe people are starting to, a lot of pedestrians are moving around, and maybe there's a way to introduce them to what's going on and what some of these things are that you already have there. But those are all issues and details that would have to be worked out. I think, if I'm correct, John, what you were looking for was a reception, or indication that maybe the site between the police station and Grandview is an appropriate location to test it. I will tell you, from the business community side, what you'd like to see this is to morph into street art, you know, and when I say street art, I'm not saying anything funky, but little things like, if you go to Newton now, they take the, and they actually do it in Northwest Park, where they take the electrical boxes, and they either paint them or shrink wrap them with a historical. If you go to Carmavir, it's the Marathon Route, outside of Newton Wellesley Hospital, there's some new mosaics. But it breaks up looking at some of that stuff that's offensive. You know, I find it offensive when you see a big green box sitting there on the side of the street. So it's just a way to move forward. And by the way, the town of Burlington has one of the best art departments of any of the schools around here, phenomenal art department. I mean, they used to have a show in the foyer there, that you'd see some of the works, so. But if you go to other communities, when you go to a hearing, whatever, a lot of them have their art displayed in the hallways, and I've actually bought a lot of it myself, so. But it's, it's just a step, and I think the business community wants to get behind it, because it does create a sense of, this is where I want to be, this is the place, you know. But there are a lot of issues that have to be worked out, the, you know, once you determine that this was a general location, because City of Worcester has one every summer, right? Where they have a field, and they have, you know, things on the ground, and they may have something in the trees, and, you know, but it's a way of bringing people to the community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I think, I think at this point, yeah, I think we're all in agreement that something's going to take place, whether it's more than likely over here next to the Grandview Farm. Yes?
If I may, John, I don't know if this is acceptable or not, but would you, can you see if the committee would be acceptable to, like, breaking phase one into phase one A and phase one B? Phase one A being the area between police station and Grandview? See how that goes? And maybe then come back with phase one B?
Originally, we had this grand vision to, you know, people would drive down 3A and say, oh, my gosh, look at this. Burlington's got this whole new identity. But there's really no reason to rush it that way whatsoever. Starting with just that field is a fine idea. It would give us experience in getting and placing sculptures without even having to discuss the use of the common proper, and gauge people's reaction. I don't see any reason whatsoever not to do it in smaller phases. We were just sort of, oh, boy, let's do this. But the more I think about it, no, there's no reason that we have to rush into it in a larger scale. The only thing I would say is, if we're going to go to trouble, it'd be nice to have enough pieces out there that it doesn't look kind of pathetic. We want to, we want to have maybe, if we were going to have two at the corners of the common and then three in the, in the field, if we're not going to do the corners of the common, maybe we'll try to look for five pieces for the field, so it's like a real thing. And then we can also maybe go talk to the garden club and see if they want to work with us to, you know, enhance the area a little bit. I mean, from our point of view, well, I think you guys know what I feel about open space. I would never want to see anything happen to the open space on the common or across the street either. The way I look at it is, is we're sort of just putting jewelry on the thing. We're not, we're not really taking up any open space. But no, starting smaller, I don't see any reason not to start smaller whatsoever.
I think that's the way to go.
Thank you. So this is, this is more going to be a review tonight than it is approval, I'm thinking. So the thing I would like to stress more than anything is, mostly sculptures, when they, when they actually do this work, don't they come up with a concept on a piece of paper first, and what they're going to do? I'd like to see that concept prior to them doing the work, and then that way there, we have a better view of what actually is going to go on there.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. The way, the way that it's done, I think that they call them, you'd probably get a proposal when you request the submission, either get a photograph of their work or a sketch, or I don't think this is, for the amount of money you have, I don't think this is going to be a made-to-order. It's probably something that someone has that they would like to display, and then I think the appropriate thing is, you have a judging, and I don't know how you've worked that out yet, but you come and this is what we'd like to do, so that there's buy-in, and you certainly don't want to do anything that's offensive, because that will, that will kill it in its spot.
Well, the bronze of the town fathers here.
He'd need a little more bronze for some of us than others, though.
And I want to clarify, the $10,000 is there today. When we did Lifetime Fitness as part of the permitting condition, we did put in some, every, a $10,000 commitment to do a sculpture along Middlesex Turnpike. There's actually a pad there, and I think the general consensus is that people are driving by that, I don't know what the speed limit is, but whatever the speed limit is, obeying the speed limit, but driving by, that no one's going to really enjoy it. And we said, you know, maybe that seed money that you could put towards something like this to try to kickstart it. But that's been in place for five years? I don't know, four, five years?
Has it been that long?
I'm sorry?
Has it been that long?
It's been that long. So it's a permit here.
Yeah, there's an empty...
Time flies, Bob.
So at this point, what I think, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to get a continuance on this, with a couple of conditions that would, would definitely want to see what they're putting in. I'd like to put a condition of only three at this time on that spot, just to see how it goes over instead of five.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, is a direction, I'm not asking for a commitment, but I think you're looking at that spot between Grandview and...
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Because that just helps when they go to solicit proposals, that you'll be able to photograph it and say, this is where the art...
Most of these sculptures I've seen are pretty good size, and I think five would be overwhelming right now, my own personal mind.
One of the most popular sculptures in the city of Boston is...
Bobby Orr.
Oh, that. Make Way for Ducklings.
End of conversation.
Make Way, the Ducklings on the common, or the public gardens.
Yeah, Make Way for Ducklings by Nancy...
No, we don't want to go there. They have, they have a...
No, I'm just saying...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those kind of sculptures are in the $50,000 range for permanent, or $150,000, so the kind of stuff we're looking for is less well-known artists, although it would be great to have something, you know, like the Red Auerbach, that you can sit with. But bronzes are...
So like I said, at this point, that's a great idea, but at this point, I'd like to get a motion to continue this, and then get to where we're going to be approving for that site over near the police station. Three, I think three right now would be great. This is just my opinion. You guys can vote any way you want, and then just go from there and see what happens. So do you guys agree with that?
Mr. Chairman, I just don't want to limit them to three if they're small, smaller, so...
Well, then you vote no.
Then, well, I was just saying, if you can... Just to let John know that if they're small, maybe show us different options. Don't show us just, just three. Show us more than three.
Would it work for us to put out the call for entries in November, in the next two weeks? Choose some tentative winners in January, and then come back to you guys and say, here are the tentative winners?
With a, so come back with a shortlist, you're saying?
Come back with a shortlist and say, here are six, seven, eight that we're looking at, and three of them would go in there. Would that work? Because I can certainly understand that, even though you, you sort of trust the, you sort of trust the sculpture committee, everybody's going to come back to you guys if we don't do it right.
Right.
I'm, by the way, willing to say that if we don't get work we like, that we're not going to settle for the least offensive ones. If we don't really think it's going to be delightful, I think we're just going to rethink how to go out and get artwork. If we don't, if we don't get stuff that's going to, people are going to love, it's not worth doing. All right, let me just say, one thought is, Truck Day, the common is fantastic, it's all full of great stuff, and this is basically saying, wouldn't it be cool if we had that kind of excitement and color every day? That's really how we think about it. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, in whatever motion is put forward, if we could get Paul to check with legal counsel about the insurance issue on all issues, making sure that everybody...
We had checked with our insurance, and we can arrange coverage one way or the other, so we will be covered.
For no matter, for whatever contingency it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen, would someone like to make a motion for, or just a continuance? We know they make a motion. We all know what we're looking for. So I think if we just make a continuance at this point, I think that'd be fair, right?
Do we have to continue to a certain date or just...
Well, it's not a public hearing, per se. We can just take it up at any time.
I'll make a motion to continue this item.
Motion by Jim, second by me. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay. So we're going to continue it. And the room empties. Thank you, everybody.
Next is a public hearing.
What's that?
Public hearings with time cert.
That was before daylight saving time, right?
That's right.
This time, do you have on that?
That's what we'll do then, yeah.
That's what I have. Can we, can we do that?
What was, what was the suggestion, Mike?
Before public hearing, the 2:41.
Yeah, it's not time yet, so.
Yeah, we can go to 2:43. That's all we're going to take, a couple more.
January Town Meeting? Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we provided you with nine zoning warrant articles that we've received by the zoning warrant article deadline for the January Town Meeting. They seem to fall into a couple of different buckets. It looks like there's some properties looking to transition to make themselves lab-friendly, and I think the other section of articles concern parking structures in different sections of town. So if you could just let Betty and I know in terms of what level of discussion you wish to have with those, and we can arrange either for the petitioners to come here, or for, you know, me to get the information from the petitioners as to what the actual meaning on the articles is. We can do it whatever way you like. I know you don't typically take a position on zoning articles, but you may want to know more about them prior to the town meeting. So just let us know in terms of what level of discussion you want to have on those.
Would you like us to let you know now, or just send you an email in the next couple of days?
Whatever works for you guys is fine.
Gentlemen, we have any questions on this, or would like to, Michael?
The zoning request for a summit, I, again, we don't typically take a position on zoning articles. This one I'm somewhat familiar with, and I think that there's a economic development component to this one that might be of interest to the board. They may want to have a proponent in to elaborate on that one. I'm not sure how the board feels. Not sure, I'm not that familiar with the other ones.
Well, my personal opinion is, I'd like to see them all come in. I like that, I like that, I like the contact. I like to find out what they're doing, exactly what's going on, reading it. We can all sit there and read it, but to actually have them come in and just go over it very briefly and quickly, you know, the read, digest version of what they're going to do, and then the questions we have, we can answer them. So that would be my opinion. Bob?
Yeah, I have no objection to that. These, do we have a January meeting before town meeting?
We always play it one...
No, I don't mean the night off, I mean before. We do, okay. So if we were to do it, it would have to be then, so that we have time to digest all the information.
We could even have it sooner, December.
Yeah, we do a lot of renewals and things at that meeting that usually clogs up...
You'll be voting on the final warrant submissions, but not the articles themselves on December 16th, and then in January, you discuss the articles themselves, whether you want to vote on it or not.
Yeah, I'm not going to be a stick-orrer on either one, but...
Jim?
Nothing. I think it's, I'll just concur with you two gentlemen.
Nick?
I'd be careful with having a summer drive and the mulc coming.
Okay. Kind of puts it out there for you.
Yep.
We're all kind of want them to come in at that point. Now we can, we could probably just go right down to minutes. Right? So Betty, would you like to do the minutes altogether, or because we have so much time, would you like to, would you like to read them back to us? Word for word? Or I can read it, and I'll read it backwards.
Well...
All right. So can I get a motion on the minutes for approval?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes for September 23rd, 2019.
I have a second.
Second.
I made a motion on second for September 23rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain? So we got a 5-0-0 on September 23rd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 7th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made a second, and do I, what was I going next? So your approval for that? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Skip the next set.
The 28th?
We have way too much time. I have to finish this one first. So everyone's in favor of this one? Abstain, against, nothing? So 5-0-0 on that one also. October 28th, we're going to skip? Okay. So now, let's do some committee reports.
Don't start with me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start, if I might.
Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanted to give an update on the recent police exams that were held in town. According to the chief, Mike Kent, 237 individuals took the exam, 146 passed. So it indicates that this is not an easy exam, this isn't something that we just do. They've taken it seriously, and I'm sure Jim can speak to that in a moment. But 146 passed, so that's a significant number who couldn't make the grade on the written part. They're in the process of doing some physical assessment testing. They've already done one, and another one's coming up in a couple of weeks, and then they're going to be doing some interviews for the people who... then they're gonna be doing some interviews, uh, for the people who get through the physical assessment part of it. They are four offices short, so they anticipate hiring someone from this exam. Um, and the academy is coming up sometime in January, so, uh, they're gonna want to do something sooner rather than later, so, um, I just wanted to give us an update on the, the exam, and the fact that what we're doing in town, I, I think is an example for a lot of communities, um, on being able to hire diverse, qualified individuals, um, who make this a better community and a better department, so, I just wanted to give us an update on that.
Thank you. Is that all you have?
That's it.
We've got plenty of time. Jim?
Um, oh, well, I don't have too, too much, I just have the, we're having interviews for the fire chief this Thursday. I don't know if you wanted to add more to that, Paul, or name the candidates, but...
That was my report too.
Okay, I'll just defer to Paul on that.
Thank you.
No.
I don't have much to add, other than what you just said, so...
Well, we'll be having the interviews with the fire chief this Thursday, uh, coming up.
Okay. I have the last. Mr. Priest?
Yes. I'll talk nice and slow for everybody, see if we can burn some time. Um, 'cause I don't have much to say. Uh, Cyber Security Committee, um, is in the process of reviewing, um, best practices for governance, uh, and really trying to look at, um, any framework that the state may have developed, other communities may have developed, uh, even, uh, private sector developed, uh, to look for best practices for, um, developing a framework toward, uh, making sure that we here in Burlington have, um, an information technology division that is set up to handle any kind of, uh, digital attack. Um, and so, um, it's a, it's a good-sized committee with a lot of smart people on it. Um, we're very lucky to have, I think, the folks that we do have on that committee, uh, really diving into this. Um, so that's what's happening there. Um, in terms of economic development, I might be stealing your thunder again, I apologize. Um, I'll just say that, that, uh, the, that the process to find economic development director is going very well, I think, in, in my opinion. Um, and, uh, I think I'll just leave that at that. Sculpture Park, you guys heard, heard from them tonight. Um, Mike, I think you had a great idea about, uh, some sort of weekend event. Uh, that's something that I want to talk further with the, with the rest of the committee about, is, you know, uh, should we reach a point where we settle on some pieces to put in that Grandview space, um, and have the garden club maybe come in and, you know, pretty it up with some, some flowers and shrubs and whatnot, um, to have like a, like a weekend kickoff event, to really acknowledge the existence of this, you know, area, um, as well as allow, I mean, you know, like Mr. Buckley said, um, you know, the high school has a lot of great art students there, you know, have them come out and maybe display some of their stuff, and really make a weekend of it, I think would be really fantastic. So, um, that's something that I want to talk about, uh, with the rest of the, the subcommittee. Um, and then I'll just say that, despite, uh, all our, all our warnings last week, Halloween...
Wonderful.
Was wonderful. Uh, it was, it was disturbingly warm almost, it was like 70, it was getting warmer as the night went on. Um, but, uh, it, it seemed like the weather had scared a bunch of folks off, and it was, it was a fairly quiet night, but, um, I know Mike had a blast, personally. Um, and, uh, I mean, we couldn't have asked for nicer weather, we were very, very lucky, so, um, yeah, that's about all I have. Thank you very much.
Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna kind of piggyback on a couple of things that Nick, uh, talked about, economic development, and, as well as, uh, you know, the, the arts, um, things that we were discussing earlier, you know, uh, first of all, let me, one of the things, Joanne Faust, our human resources director, for coordinating and organizing, uh, this economic development search. She's been very thorough and gave us a lot of tools that helped us, um, get to the point where we are today, with some very fine candidates. Um, but interestingly, though, today, uh, on a number of occasions, a number of those, number of those applicants actually talked about communities who, uh, were getting creative with zoning in areas that are sort of, uh, underutilized, or the, where, areas where they want to encourage development, and they're, and they're adding a, a, a sort of an artsy, uh, component to their, to their zoning, so, um, you know, the, um, so, it's trending that way, so that, you know, the sculptures and the, um, artsy entertainment type, uh, things seem to be in demand, so, uh, I hope Mr. Sax didn't get the wrong idea from my comments earlier, that's, that's not something that we're not interested in, but so, because I think it's, it's certainly worth our while, and I think the community would benefit from, uh, something like that, so I hope we can fine-tune that and get something going pretty soon.
How's that?
Um, Mike, I agree, I've, I've talked to people who said the same thing, that, um, arts and, and culture is becoming more and more prevalent, more and more important in, in cities and towns, and just, it's a pipe dream, but it'd be nice if we could end up with some sort of community, I know we have the A Community Theater, but I'd like to, you know, at some point, you know, see if, if it's viable to have a community center, a community theater somewhere, located somewhere centrally, uh, like a cultural center. So, it's just something that's out there that I think would be a great asset, it, I don't know how to do it or go about it, but it just seems to be that a lot of towns are doing something like that, adding, adding culture and, and arts, and it'd be kind of nice to locate that somewhere central.
Yeah, I think that the Wally event is, is a, is a good example, where, you know, we get the culture, uh, on display out there, and then people from, uh, all walks of life seem to enjoy these, these type of events, so, uh, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, we do a lot of things out in that common, it's a very busy, it's a, it's a very, it's a busy, uh, area, uh, not only in the summer, but in the winter with the tree lighting and, uh, things like that, so, yeah, very busy, and, uh, you know, certainly most of the people, all the people in town I talk to...
A lot of weddings on that common too. A lot of weddings on that common, and not all from Burlington.
Yeah.
A lot of people from out of town come to our common to get married on the common.
Do the, do the kids go out there on the nights of the proms to have their pictures taken?
Yeah.
Now they're using red carpet.
Yes.
Well, kudos to, uh, Recre, I mean, for the amount of activity that goes out, that goes on out, out there, they do a heck of a job, uh, keeping it looking pretty good out there.
Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna go forward with the chairman's report. Um, I don't know which one to start with, I'll start with the, I'm gonna start with the hunting first, I have a couple of things. So as we all know, it's hunting season, uh, we do have permission from this board to hunt the landlocked forest. Uh, the gentlemen have to pass a proficiency test, they have to have a license from the state of Massachusetts to bow hunt and to rifle hunt, which they are not allowed to use rifles, and they have to have a certificate of, uh, bow hunter's safety course. So these guys go through a lot to process, plus they have to pass the proficiency tests, which I run. These gentlemen go through a lot to get the permission from the town to hunt that land. Now, over the past weekend, we had someone that harvested a deer, he brought the deer out, everything he did was legal, I saw where his tree stand was, uh, I saw where he actually, um, harvested the deer from. Uh, and there was a couple of people, uh, waiting for him at the end of the trail when he got out. Uh, he was very, um, nice to them, gave them their hunting license, gave them the ID that the town gives out, um, harassed him a little bit, and then from that point on, he got in a truck and he came, and then I got a couple of phone calls from these people. Uh, these people are, uh, not Burlington residents, they're Lexington residents, and I'm just gonna try to put it out there that there is a law out there, it's called hunter harassment law. Uh, we have this guy on trail camera walking through, um, the area of where this guy was hunting, and for me personally, it's very upsetting, uh, to think that these guys go out and they do everything they need to do to do it by the letter of the law, which we stated from here from the Board of Selectmen and the state of Massachusetts, and then you have people, just because they disagree with what this gentleman is doing, or what the other 20 people are doing in that area, uh, he decided that he would walk around and do things that weren't appropriate for this. Uh, and I will state this, this isn't coming from the Board of Selectmen, I do have the platform to use this. If I find that this keeps going on, I will call the state of Massachusetts, I will call environmental police, and I will put a hunter harassment suit against these people. This isn't right, it's not fair, they've done everything by the letter of the law. So I'm very upset with this, I've kept myself all weekend long, but I knew that I'd have the moment tonight to, to say this. So anybody out there listening, if you disagree with it, just stay away from them, they don't, they, they're doing everything right. Uh, I'm not gonna get into any more because I could, but I'm not going to, I'm just trying to make it a point that there is a law out there against these people, that you can, you can take these people to court for hunter harassment. Uh, the fines are very, um, very steep, from what I understand. Okay, I'll get off that soapbox. Now, on good news, I'd like to congratulate my niece.